Can we get roll call?
Mr. Pitts.
Yes, sir.
Chair McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton.
Here.
Vice Chair Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson, here. You have four matters here.
Item two, the meeting minutes, we will move that to the February meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
The meeting minutes from December meeting. Moving on to item three, old business. Item A, amendments to chapter eighty-four of Upson County Code telecommunications. We will open the public hearing, and I believe you have to call Mr. Pitts.
Yes.
This is Bill.
Mr. Pitts, this is Doug Courier. You are now live.
Good day.
Live at the public hearing to discuss the ordinance. You got the copy of it through the email, right?
Sorry?
You got the language in the email that I sent?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
The floor is yours. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So the only fundamental item was the remaining, the thirty-five-foot exemption remained. That was the specific thing I had requested to be altered, to be a more relaxed standard and more in line with nearby communities around Upson County. The one thing I had said originally was that a PE certification would cost several hundred dollars. I was in error for that. I have spoken with a PE, and his estimate is it would be three to four thousand dollars to get a PE certification for a tower such as mine. So that becomes a showstopper. So it's, you know, that economically doesn't work and just makes this an economic roadblock for amateurs trying to put up a tower of modest height with modest means such as what I have. So, you know, you're talking with him. He hasn't, you know, he's another amateur radio operator as well, so he's been looking through, and we've been conversing, but he did estimate that our actual PE certification was not several hundred, but was in fact several thousand dollars. So with that, you know, I'm kind of back to the request to relax that thirty-five-foot exemption value, to be a little more in line with nearby communities of Lamar, Upson, I mean of Lamar Pike, Monroe, et cetera, and make that number something, say a hundred feet, to give some amateur guys the room to economically put up their antenna systems. And then, sorry?
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And then lastly, just looking at the PRB one language and the guidance with that of this being supposed to be the minimum required regulation necessary. And thirty-five feet seems a little excessive to meet that as well. And I think with that, I don't think I've got anything further.
Can you describe what it is you hope to construct? This is Commissioner Beatty asking you a question.
I'm sorry?
I was just identifying myself as Commissioner Beatty.
Okay. Well, the tower is a Rome twenty-five commercial tower sections, and I'm looking to put up about sixty-five feet here at my house with appropriate guy wires and anchors, matching as closely as I can do with the drawings that are provided in the Rome catalog, which are engineering drawings, but they're not PE certified. So it'll be a sixty-five-ish foot total length with the mast out the top with antennas on top, and then guy wires to support that below that. So it'll be a relatively modest tower with antennas at the top and guy wires to anchors on the ground, two sets of guys, possibly a third set of guys. That's something I'm discussing with the PE that I've been talking with. But it's, in terms of amateur radio stuff, it's a modest tower. There will be three or four antennas at the top to cover different bands.
So what you're going to construct is commercially purchased?
Yes.
Okay, how is it? Is it certified by the manufacturer?
I'm not sure what you mean with that.
Well, I mean, the manufacturer has some kind of liability if they manufacture a defective product, a product that's going to fall over.
Well, Rome's been a tower manufacturer since probably the middle nineteen hundreds, even back into the nineteen fifties.
Right, but they don't certify their, certify their manufactured product?
They do, but that's a separate thing. I mean, I'm sorry.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought what we, the language we had was...
Mr. Pitts, I thought that when you were here before that you mentioned that you wanted to use some parts that you had from something else.
Well, yeah, there is a, there has been a modification to the base, the base plate of the tower, and I had suggested that that may not be certifiable. The engineer I spoke to didn't seem to think that that would be a problem, but it has been modified from what Rome manufactured. But his comment was that the base of the tower is, has particular forces on it, that that really wouldn't affect what changes have been made to this piece. The tower sections themselves are direct from Rome, and the base plate is actually a Rome base plate. It's just had a hinge added to it so that it can tilt over.
So when the antenna that you have from Rome, does it have any manufacturers?
Specs.
Specs?
Yes, and I'm using their drawings from their data to design what I'm planning to put together.
So the only thing, modification you've done is add a hinge to it so you could tilt it, so you've not changed the structure of what they factory fitted.
That's correct.
Did you buy this?
That's exactly correct.
Because what we, like Alyssa said, I think last time we thought you were doing something that you were manufacturing parts yourself, trying to cut.
Cut costs.
Homemade, homemade parts, for lack of better words, homemade parts to cut costs, which is a whole different ballgame from what we're hearing now.
Well, no, I had described that this base was a Rome base that had been modified to add a hinge to it so that it could tilt over.
Well, let me ask you, did you buy this antenna directly from the manufacturer, or is it secondhand?
No, these are all secondhand pieces that I've been assembling and gathering over a period of time to, in preparation to do this.
So this is not a combination of multiple?
No.
Types of, it's one, it's something that if you bought it from Rome today, you would buy it as one complete piece?
Well, the base would be different because their base is not exactly what this is, but yeah, that's essentially, if I went to Rome and bought a fifty-foot tower kit, it would have these tower sections, and it would have a base similar to what I have, and the guys would be similar to what I have, and so forth, yes. Yeah, it's not, this is not something I welded up in the shop, no.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Pitts, I don't think there's any other questions, so I think we're, I think we're good. We appreciate you calling in, or us.
We do.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Any other comments? Conversation we need to have?
Well, I guess, you know, in response to his request, he's asking us to increase the height of what requires some type of engineering certification.
Well, I think it's concerned if you look at page two of the ordinance, paragraph three at the bottom. "The old language was any information of an engineering nature that the applicant submits, whether civil, mechanical, or electrical, shall be certified by a licensed professional engineer." And then we added the language that you all suggested, "A written manufacturer's and/or professional structural engineer certification shall be submitted," stating, et cetera. You all can read that for yourself. Now, recall that in the past amateur radio towers and their support structures were excluded from this. There's other language in this that now includes them. So they were not included in that, number three, they were excluded from number three because that's old language. That's been in the ordinance for a long time. You added some, and we've now included amateur radio towers and their structures in number three. So that's why he's concerned that in the past they've been included, or excluded, now they're included. So if you wanted to exclude them under a certain height or altogether, you'll see, you'll recall other places there were fencing and landscaping. We specifically put in language to exclude the amateur radio towers and support structures themselves. That's something you could do or include them in. Again, I'll remind you that what we did is, under thirty-five feet, no special exception is required. You can still go as far above thirty-five feet as you want, but now it's a special exception. So we don't even have a cap. That was a conversation we had at your last meeting, is you all had suggested a cap. I didn't put one in. There was a specific question about that. I said, "The cap is now a special exception here." They'll come in and ask for whatever they want, and then you all will say, "Yes, okay, we'll grant you that height or we won't." So, pun intended, the sky's the limit. Whatever they want asked for. They just have to go through the special exception process, anything over that thirty-five feet.
So I'm looking back at these emails, and this one from October twelfth, his email to you. It says, again, "The modified parts are better than or beyond the manufacturer's specs, but are not commercial." So a structural engineer is not going to sign off.
I, it sounds to me like he's modified them in such a way that, maybe it was originally a manufactured part, but he's added something or had reinforced it somehow, or whatever, modified it somehow, but the original part was manufactured. It's not something he manufactured. It's something he's modified. Which, in my, well, let me ask you this. Say, for example, there is a requirement for this certification. Could they come in perhaps and ask for a variance to, you know, to get past that?
If it becomes an issue?
If it became an issue, and he says, "Well, maybe he could demonstrate," you know, like he's saying, it's actually, here's the picture or photograph of the original part. This is how I've modified it, and that's, it's actually stronger, you know, and maybe get a variance approval as opposed to, you know, support the process.
Yeah, I don't, in the time I've been here, we've never had a variance request to basically the building codes. That's sort of what we're indicating here. It's always been an open door, that can happen. We just don't get those sort of cases.
Yeah.
The ICC codes seem to cover everything well, and most people accept them.
Are you aware of any complaint that the county's ever had or received about anybody's tower being this and that?
No.
I don't ever know of anybody that had.
But I also don't know of anybody who's ever come in for a permit.
If that's true, we may need a backup.
Well, again, sometimes what happens is the complaint is what triggers, oh, well, you should have gotten a permit. In this case, you just didn't get one. That happens with regular construction.
Well, this guy's breaking new ground, essentially is what you're saying. When he applies.
I can't say that there's never been a permit for amateur radio tower or a support structure. I can't say that. I do not recall any in the eight years that I've been here, but this county's been here a whole lot longer than I have been here, so.
I don't.
There may have been in the past. I just can't tell you.
I don't know if I recall anybody having a problem.
I don't ever remember, since I've been on here, I mean, I don't.
Well, of course, the other thing is, is if this gets approved and there are some bugs that come out of it, you can always fix them, make modifications.
I guess my thing is, I understand he's saying that, okay, the only modification I made is adding a hinge to it. If you say, okay, we're going to base this off of knowing that, then how do you keep a bigger modification from sliding under the radar? If you change, if you change something with this?
Well, I guess it's sort of like what you just alluded to, is if the building official had a problem and says, "No, we're not going to permit this the way you've got it designed because of X, Y, and Z." If they choose to appeal or ask for variance, they'd be back before you.
I would like to see some procedure to where, you know, we got into this whole issue of an engineering certifying plans or a design or whatever potentially being pricey. And three or four thousand dollars, you know, sounds reasonable, but it's also sounds like it might be a showstopper for some people, so.
If all his parts were, could be purchased in a kit, and that kit from his company, whether he purchased them from them or not, you know, and the only modification is that hinge, he should be able to go to the company and say, "Hey, could you give me, could I get the, your certification on this tower number, whatever." You know, everything's got a serial number or a model number. Can you give, show me the specs? Because, I mean, they're not producing this without somebody certifying that it's going to stand up for the wind and, and all those things, and put it on the market. They have to. So if...
And I'd be surprised if the company doesn't make what he's describing, you know, to fold the antenna down, to work on it.
I mean, it's a tilt unit, so you can, you can let it down, you can change out the antennas, you can, without having to pay somebody an exhaustive fee to climb a hundred-foot tower, you know? Because those climbers get...
They do. They get big money.
They get big money to climb those towers, so they...
It's amazing what they get.
They fix a tilt mechanism on it. And I would think that he could, if this is a full capable thing, other than that one thing, that he could get specs, a spec sheet from the company, that this is what was specced on it, and if it matches it, then it would be a certified tower, you know? That's just what I see.
He may have the original paperwork with everything but this, you know.
Well, no, he said he's collected these parts, so that means that he bought this section from somebody, this section from somebody. Maybe they all are...
Maybe they all are from the same model.
Model number, so that the parts will work together, you know, will interchange, you know, so that's realistically to say, but, you know, that he should be able to put his hands on something from the company, that this tower, this model number, and here's how we certify it. And then if he's, his only modification is a hinge, then I would say, well, he's got a problem if he had paperwork, if he had paperwork showing the company certified it, you know, without having to go out and spec a, you know, get a separate engineer, PE, to handle it.
Well, you know, thirty-five feet is not that high, not really, in the grand scheme of things. Maybe we could consider also, and I'm just spitballing here, increasing the height before such certification would be required.
Well, again, certification isn't reliant on the thirty-five feet or less. That's for a tower of two feet or two hundred feet. The only issue is what becomes a special exception. Right now, we just, the old cutoff was thirty-five feet, period. You couldn't have it. What we added...
They didn't have one.
Right. You can go above thirty-five feet, period, and they didn't have to go through this review because this was only for big towers. We've now included them basically in the mix with the big towers. You excluded them from some requirements. You did not exclude them. As a matter of fact, you added language to this particular part of it. But in terms of that thirty-five feet, they can still go above that. The question you might ask is, okay, at what point do you want to insist on a special exception versus by right? Right now, by right is thirty-five feet. They still have to get a permit, but by right is thirty-five feet. Anything above that is by special exception.
I guess, you know, the whole certification is just some assurance that it's not going to fall down. If he can assure us that it's not going to fall down, well, he does that, you know? Demonstrate, like I said, demonstrate that the fact that what he's modified is actually an improvement over an original part to, you know, to satisfy.
Essentially, if you don't want it to fall down, then what we need to look at critically is the guy wires and the...
The base.
Yeah. That's what we need to look at, and if he meets that criteria, I see no need to keep beating us around, you know, just kicking it.
Well, of course, number one, you'll have whatever certifications come with the equipment. Number two, you'll have our building official doing an inspection. Now, has he done inspections on the big cell towers? Yes, he absolutely has, the most recent one being the one off of Allen Road. Has he done inspections of these? Well, not in Upson County. I don't, I can't tell you in the rest of his career, but he's certainly done the larger ones. I don't know that the smaller ones, they've got the same concept, you know? Are they not going to fall over? Are they sound? Are they anchored correctly, et cetera? And he's going to look at those plans, and, you know, even if they're off-the-shelf kind of plans, he's going to look at those and make sure everything's built according to those plans. But that's our inspector.
Like I said, if, what's this fellow's name?
Mr. Pitts.
Bill Pitts.
Bill Pitts.
Yeah, if he can assure somebody or demonstrate to the inspector that it's not going to fall over, to me, that goes a long way towards approving it, you know?
But we're talking, you're talking about one case. We're talking about...
I know, I know. Well, whatever I'm applying to this, I would apply to everything, you know? The manufacturer has to have something, some set of plans, drawings, whatever, that would come in the box when you receive it. I would hope that he has this, or, you know, and everything's online. You can download that stuff. Done it many, many times with many, many different things, you know, gone online, had a pistol one time. I didn't know how to take down, so I just Googled it. And, you know, there were the disassembly instructions. So to me, if this, if it has a set of schematic drawings and whatever, engineering drawings, it's been certified somehow, which is sort of demonstrative that it's not going to fall over. It's not designed to fall over. It's designed to withstand a certain wind. You know, anything can fall over, just depending on hurricane-force winds, it's liable to topple, so.
But based on the height of the thing, it's not going to hurt anybody. It's not going to fall off its property. It's not going to hurt, you know.
Yeah, as long as he's meeting the other requirements, I mean, there's a setback requirement and all of that, so. I say that we approve this ordinance as written. There's no sense in modifying it. You know, that would be the tail wagging the dog, and let Mr. Pitts try to follow the procedure and get approval for his specific intent, and work with, you know, the building department in order to make that happen.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Second.
That we approve it as is, as written.
Do a little second.
I have a second, yeah.
All of them?
You have us?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, item B, gateways overlay ordinance. We have new information here.
Will we notify this gentleman?
Please, probably. Why? I'm still listening.
What, you asked if we would notify Mr. Pitts of what?
Well, he's, he's probably still watching, and then this still has to go to the board of commissioners. You have made a recommendation, and this will go probably to the second meeting in February.
And he'll be alerted to that?
Yes.
Okay, so the gateway overlay ordinance, this is coming out of our work session, correct?
Yes, I thank you to our clerk.
Yes.
Danny Buchanan for recording this and my absence, and I did listen to it once. And where you see double underlines, that is your language. Cross-throughs are going to be your deletions. So, you know, and obviously all of it is underlined because it's all brand-new language. There is no gateway overlay district. I did a little bit of cleaning up here of language or format of words or things like that, but basically this is, this is it. This is the progress we've got so far. If you want to, as you did during your workshop, we can start from beginning and go through, or you'll see that where you all had questions, I put a question mark. If there was something you all wanted to discuss there, or if I just decided, well, I think we need some clarification there, or we need to explain something, there's question marks there. So we can go either through it, you know, from beginning to end, or if you want to just go to the points where you all made changes.
Address the question marks and changes?
Yeah.
All right, let's see. I'm going to flip through this up here. All right, I'm not, I'm not too far into it, and there we go. Basically, the, you'll see double underlines where you said the things would be to the city limits, and I did that where it made sense, but then there's question marks for... and I did that where it made sense, but then there's question marks for seventy-four, and of course, eighty does not butt into any city limits, so we'd have to decide either to maintain the current guideline, the Parkview Road, or decide something else. You basically said that you wanted everything from county lines to city, of course, on seventy-four, but from the Monroe County line in, you've got Lake Yatesville, the city limits, then you skip through Yatesville, and then you've got Thomaston, the city limits, so I guess to follow and be consistent, you would basically do that, you would want everything from the Monroe County line in, but that wasn't said during your workshop, so that's basically my question mark, is that what we're saying, is that from Monroe County, skipping over the two cities, it'll be on seventy-four all the way to, I guess, the Thomaston city limit?
Definitely needs to go all the way to the city limits on Thomaston.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think from Monroe County, Monroe County line, skip over city of Yatesville, start back.
All right, you can just say excluding the confines of the city of Yatesville.
We can absolutely do that. Then the other question is...
State Route eighty?
Eighty. There's no city limits down there?
Where's Parkview Road? I say eighty to US nineteen is what I would say.
We could do that?
Yeah. Because then it's going to pick up US nineteen from Taylor County.
Right.
All right, moving along.
Question mark about the forty-five foot, I'm on page, what page this is?
Yeah, there are pages, but under architectural requirements, right. I guess my speculation there would be is that there may be driveways to go to things that sort of, well, I guess, let's use the idea of a flag lot, basically, a flag lot type of driveway, maybe the frontage is one lot and businesses, and then there's a driveway that goes between businesses to somebody else back there. Now, that's unusual for business, because we want frontage, we want to be highly visible, but that's not always the case. What does specific, this is all speculation, I don't know what ordinance, when this was looked at and picked out, she saw, and what particular licenses were.
This is off of, I believe that came off of the cities.
That came directly from Thomaston, forty-five feet?
The question mark for me, which is clarifying, what does this mean? This forty-five-foot driveway, no longer than forty-five foot? What if your business was set back a hundred, a hundred feet? You couldn't have a driveway, your driveway would have to stop at the forty-five feet? They'd have to walk the other fifty feet, or how does that work? I was just questioning the language there, no brighter in length than forty-five feet.
Yeah, and if you, you know, I don't know how this might have been in an original ordinance, and they got mangled as it got changed over years. To me, it basically just says you can't have a driveway longer than forty-five feet back to your property. That's not totally dissimilar to in the subdivisions, there's a limit how long a flag lot stick is supposed to be. Now, we keep waving that, but the idea is that at some point, it's ridiculous to have a driveway, you know, to something that's way back there, and we want to set a limit, so that's just the standard here that I would see. This might require you to build a road, or a road would have to come in at some other location rather than as driveway. We've seen in the past, and if you ever want to discuss them, like where we have, I'll call them flag lot cities, where you've got a whole section where it's flag lots for a quarter-mile. This would be something similar that, hey, at some point, no, we don't want you doing a long driveway, we want a road in there to access any businesses that might be there. I mean, looking at the implications.
This is also residential, this didn't just business-wise.
It doesn't specify that it...
Yeah, so we got to clean up the language, because...
Yes, I mean, if you look up at B on the page before B, it says, "Arctic standards for residential and non-residential buildings," is where you're starting out of that section right there, and then underneath, you go into one and subdividing, so, I mean, my house I sold, my driveway was fifteen hundred feet long back in the woods.
And every one of these corridors has property like that. I can think of US nineteen and Seventy-four West that has property, and it may be a hundred-and-fifty-acre tract of land, but there's a driveway that goes way off the road to a residence, because the residence is three hundred feet inside the property line. So if we're talking about for business purposes, or, I mean, like I said, the language just needs to be cleaned up. If you're concerned with flag lots, maybe include some language in there that if it's a flag lot, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying that I know that...
Well, a flag lot already has a standard, this is an overlay. So a flag lot, if it's addressed in a flag lot, a flag lot already has a standard for the county.
Right, this would be, make it more strict in the case of residential.
Yeah, this is overlay for residence, you know?
Or does this say that anything in excess of forty-five feet requires...
Well, he's saying it would require the construction of a road.
Well, I'm saying, does it, do you call it construction of a road? Do you call it a variance based on a piece of prop, you know, the layout of a piece of property?
I would just be concerned that if I won the lottery tonight and was able to buy five hundred acres on one of these, I wouldn't be able to put a road, you know?
Back there where you...
Now, if I wanted to build a subdivision, that's one thing, I understand what you're saying, you know, or a strip mall, or businesses, or whatever, I understand what you're saying. But if a single residential piece of property...
So maybe we separate it from residential to business?
Could be.
Or add subdivisions.
Or subdivisions, yeah.
And that kind of thing. I'm just saying the language is going to be...
Single residential property...
Single family or excluded.
Yeah, would be excluded from that.
Yeah, I think they ought to be able to have whatever kind of...
That's the easiest way to word it, is single-family residences would be excluded from this for the length of your driveway.
All right, and I can look at the city ordinance to see in the context if it's different from the context that we have here.
Yeah, there may be a contextual issue there.
The other thing that we had a question on is right before that, dedicated green space. "Portion of space between the right-of-way and thirty feet from said right-of-way shall be a green space." Our question was, one of the things we talked about, what if there's not thirty feet there?
And you would just have to use whatever's available, but then you've got the parking conflict potentially. Yeah, I know you talked about where US nineteen's been widened, there's barely any frontage to the property. We would basically have to make allowances, but it probably would be a good idea to incorporate those problems into the ordinance, recognizing that they're already there, rather than case by case. I mean, how do we solve that? Do we do, you know, fifty-fifty, if you've only got twenty-eight feet, you've got parking spaces, and then the rest, maybe that's it? You're only given one row of parking, and then everything else has to be minimum, you know? If you're not going to do the whole thing, green space, and have all your parking and access from the side and back, all right, well, then you get a minimum of, maximum of one row of parking, and whatever's left over from that standard parking, and we have dimensions for parking, the rest would be green space.
Of course, on parking, depending on the building and all, you could, it could be required to have this, a certain number of parking spaces to supply that, you know, to support that business, too.
Well, we already have a parking...
You've already got a parking.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's already there.
Right.
So then you...
Well, this standard would tell you where it could go. We would say, because we want green space in the front, but you have a problem because of widening the US nineteen. We're going to say, you get a max, you can either do no parking, or the maximum parking is one row of parking with a drive-through, and everything else is going to be the side and the back.
Just so we clarify that, like that.
Right.
We could do that.
That's what I was...
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
The next thing that I have is, okay, we changed reconstructed slash renovated buildings on two B.
Right, there was, I think there was just an issue about what was being spoken about, and I think that probably should have a double underline.
You have to get a building permit to rent about your property?
Depends, if it's structural.
Yeah.
But no, if you're changing the paint color, no permit required. Siding, yes, going from siding to siding, or window change-outs, that requires, door change-outs, I don't think we require a permit for doors.
If you're changing, like, sizes of stuff, right?
Well, windows, it's just, we've always, it's just always been a requirement for changing out windows, I guess, because of the inspection requirement to make sure they fit right, or not quite sure why that's always been, but it's always been.
Two C also says new or reconstructed buildings. We, I have one here, we wanted renovated, reconstruct slash renovated. Basically matching two C and two B.
Two, yeah.
Okay, where are we talking about?
Two C, right below that first one that we added renovated. The following building materials used...
Wrecked, destroyed, slash renovated buildings are prohibited.
Reconstructed slash renovated.
Okay, two C, so put reconstructed slash renovated?
Yes.
Can we go back just a minute? Can you define for me what a precast block is?
No, but we could look it up.
Precast concrete?
Yeah, I remember your discussion.
Well, we discussed... I can think of...
Masonry block?
A masonry block is precast, I mean, it's more in, but some are, have an architectural design, so when you set them, it sort of gives you the exterior of the building textured look.
We discussed that on Split Place, because she had something in there about you couldn't use a split.
Yeah, I was just asking for, I mean, he's got definition question mark right there.
Right, that's because in your meeting, the discussion, yeah, is what does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean?
And we need to look that up.
Okay.
I'm sure ICC may have one definition.
I think something else we talked about, too, was an or man-made stone. What says natural stone?
Right, that should be, yeah, it is, man-made does double underline, so you're right, that's something you had discussed.
Oh, yeah, I see it, okay, sorry.
Where are we at?
Right above where you were, natural and or man-made stone.
Right.
So, precast concrete, do we want an example of what that is, or...
Precast concrete would be a form, sort of a thing, like that last building they put up out there on the, going in off of the Martha Hill.
Okay, well, that's...
Precast, standard up.
Poured, maybe that's...
Precast, precast would be poured in a form on the ground.
It poured somewhere else in brown area.
Yeah, picked up.
Different form than precast.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, yeah, precast, that's what that would be.
Okay.
Stand alone, really.
Traded with a color, yeah. Yeah.
Good with that?
Yeah.
The other question we had was smooth or split-faced concrete? We talked about that, that's basically what schools have.
Yeah, ice block.
Right, split, I didn't say split-based block.
They're a third, a third more heavier than regular block, it will break your back.
Yeah.
It will break your back.
Well, that's, yeah. And they have an architectural look to them, too.
Yeah, that's what the, that's the whole...
Well, it's just not, it's just not a block, it's just not a concrete block.
Yes, it's a concrete block, but the front side of it is pulled with a form, it's pulled with a structural form instead of just a flat.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it is just a concrete block that's heavier with a, with an architectural design.
With the modified face on it.
Yeah.
That's what makes it not just a concrete block.
Right.
To me, I mean, just a concrete, a just plain concrete block, you know, whether it's twelve-inch or six-inch, it's a twelve or eight-inch, whatever, it's long ones, if there's ones that aren't so wide.
Eights and twelves are standards.
Yeah.
These are still...
To me, that's just a...
These are still eights and twelves, they've just got a fancy front.
Yeah, they got a fancy front, right.
So is smooth, does smooth mean just a regular concrete block?
That's just a smooth, that's just a concrete block.
Then maybe we should remove the wording "split-faced" from that and leave "smooth." Split-face is more of the decorative.
Well, I'm thinking, I imagine they're more expensive, too.
Yeah, what do you guys think?
I'm good with it.
Okay. D, we removed the colors that are deemed loud, clashing, or garish shall be prohibited. We left in the muted, muted and neutral tones should be used in place of that. We struck all of...
Trace that.
Minimum requirements for green space C.
Right.
Down to number seven, we left that.
Well, there have to be some language changes. If you see a little further up in that, number three, it says, "Maintain the plants in accordance with the minimum requirements provided." Well, we pretty much deleted the minimum requirements, so you may have to change that language, I'll have to look at it.
Removed, well, I had a one out of section D, life expectancy.
You know, we could put some language in there that says that dead trees have to be removed. Cause you know, trees and stuff dying, people just leave them for long periods of time. Or, you know, just some markers that disallows dead trees.
It says, item two says a relatively sound and solid trunk with no extensive decay or hollow.
Right.
And then three says no more than one major and or severe, or and or several minor dead limbs on hardwoods only.
Right.
Basically, if it's a dead tree, you gotta get rid of it, if you don't.
Yeah. Okay. That language probably would work.
Now, we, we could augment it with just a sign, a sentence that says, any dead material will be removed. It's easy to do on the same line.
Uh, we got down to the sign part of this.
Yeah, I thought this is where we.
This is where we kinda got.
Ordinance.
Yeah.
Right, and then I start, you'll see in the yellow where I added some things. Um, let's see, there was a question about animated signs. Animated sign is anything that moves, so it's got flashing, if it's, you know, the temp, timing temperature, if the light's on it, or if it's got something that spins or moves up and down or in and out. Mostly, I think, in Upson County, we've got animated as an electronically animated, but this would prohibit animated signs. Now, the interesting thing here is that some of these things, well, and this sort of gets into the billboard, so I guess I'm jumping ahead. But the only place we allow billboards is on the corridors that we're now saying are the entrance ways. So basically, the, um, the gateway for at least gate, for billboards is the same as the current ordinance. So what you could say is you just, you know, you're changing the standard here because there's no difference between the two. You're basically lowering what we allow for billboards, because they're one in the same with the current billboard regulations. Cause you don't allow billboards on any other roads except the ones we're talking about. Are they allowed on 80? No, I guess they're not, other than 80, um, they're not allowed on 80. But 74, 19, 36, that's the only place you're allowed to have billboards anyway. So what you've done is just changed it, so I guess the, the discussion you have to have here, are these the new standards for billboards? Or do you wanna keep the ones you've got, which are certainly higher?
So that, that, that is today's standards right there, a billboard in the county.
Well, this is what she had put in to change it, so.
Oh, okay.
This would actually lower the standards, because in this particular case, when it comes to billboard regulation, the gateway overlay is the same as where any billboard would be permitted anyway. So in effect, you're basically changing the billboard regulation with this regulation. So in theory, if, if you and the board of commissioners stick with the full length of those corridors or the gateways, well, then you, that's the same place where these billboards are, and you've regulated it, just with a different name. So you, you're basically going back to, well, this is what we permitted when we allowed billboards. Are we gonna lower this, lower the standards, not allow them to be what they were permitted originally?
What is the billboard?
Well, it's certainly a lot more complicated than what we have here. I don't think I printed out a copy of our sign ordinance, but that's certainly something that I can bring to the next meeting.
Whatever it is, it needs to read the sign.
Right, well, or you would just delete billboards here because it's already in the sign ordinance. Or basically, this is saying, we wanna take a relook at what we allow for billboards. Like, there's a thousand foot separation, there's maximum heights, I think it's, wow, I'm not gonna, I don't remember the numbers.
More strict is gonna be the, the big, the big issue in this anyway. But if we just eliminated it from our, from the gateway and let the present billboard ordinance take care of that.
Supersede it.
Yeah, supersede it instead of having to, having to have double language, you know? That's all we do is have double language here. If what we've got already is more strenuous than this.
No, it's less, this would be stricter. But remember, originally, you were gonna have stricter billboard regulations in a shorter gateway, or, yeah, shorter gateway corridor. Now you've made the gateway the entire length, which means it's identical to the regulations for billboards. Cause those are the only places, except 80, where you allow billboards. They're only allowed on 19 and 36.
So which is more stringent, this?
This, right.
Okay, can we get the language and kinda say?
Absolutely.
Study that a little bit. You all right with that?
Now, the standard that I suggested in here, and again, it sort of makes it a little odd when you say it's the full length of 74, 36, and 19, is at least an unincorporated county. That's where, I don't know, 80, 90% of our traditional non mom and pop, non mom and pop commercial is. So it's almost like the same discussion that you have with a billboard, but not quite. But you could basically say that it's gotta be, if you think about, and see, one of you mentioned one of the communities, well, is it Fayetteville? You know, those sort of communities may require.
That would be street city.
A monument type sign. Where basically, the sign starts on the ground and it doesn't go up on a pole.
That's right.
It goes up maybe only 15 feet, 18 feet, not 30 feet, 25.
To me, that's the, I think that was the one that.
And they do that more, more so from like a sign for a business, like in front of a business. Now, they'll have billboards up there, but they're, they're widely spaced.
Right now, yours is spaced a thousand feet.
Right. I'm thinking, I'm thinking like if you travel down 54, down through there from what Fayetteville to Peachtree City, you know, you've got a, you've got a, a business, if it has a sign, it's either on that business, on the side of that building, or it's like monument.
Ground mounted.
Ground mounted.
And that's what I suggest here, is I think that most of the communities that you think have a higher standard tend towards monument signs. Now, some of those communities, I was way more generous with height than they are. Um, they might limit it 10 or 12 feet, but this is just a starting point. This is just something that I think in most of the communities that I think have improved. You can almost, and I guess this is the planner in me, when I drive through a community, I, I start to look at things, oh, they have got a sign ordinance, I can tell. You, you can look at them and tell, there's a, this is different from what's over there because of the signs. And very, very often, it's the monument versus pole signs, that's something that you can readily tell. Um, and some of these communities that you can think of are, uh, higher income communities overall, they're gonna have that more strict type of regulation. And this is the type of thing you see. Except just my ideas, when I saw this, is we didn't really do much with the traditional signage. And it's something you could do, if you don't like it, we can throw it out and, and change it. Because right now, you don't really regulate pole or stanchion signs, um, at all, or monument signs at all. They're just, they're recognized, but they exist, but you have zero regulations. You could have two of them, you could have 20 of them. Uh, there is a height, I'm sorry, I think 35 feet is the max height for your, there's a pole sign, monument sign, whatever. So this would actually put some regulations in. Now, the interesting thing is, is the board of commissioners can agree that the gateway corridors are the entire length of those corridors. I guess we'll find out. But that's the yellow language and what I had put in there. Uh, you know, I've been discussed with many times our sign ordinance and how little it controls. And I said, that's what we were asked to do. We were told to make a very simple, well, if you remember at first, there was a refusal, we're not going to do a sign ordinance, period. And then there was some discussion in the community and, all right, we're gonna have a sign ordinance, but we're gonna have the simplest one, and that's what you have. You basically have a billboard ordinance and you have a sign maintenance ordinance. But if you ask me, and, and these are the typical things you see in a sign ordinance, which I have enforced in the past in other places. Um, you know, maximum square footage. You add up every sign together, and if it exceeds the maximum, you don't permit new signs, or well, you're gonna have to take those out to put that one up, that sort of thing. Max this type of sign, that type of sign. You know, maybe you can only have one pole sign or two pole signs, or one monument sign or two. The one ordinance I was looking at limited the monument signs to one for each street frontage. You know, I don't, did I go into that? Yeah, I think I did include that here, one for each side. But then if you've got a Walmart, maybe you allow, you know, every five, or if you've got 500 feet or more, maybe you allow a second monument sign. You know, we've got a very simple one, we could get more complicated. Again, it depends on what standards you want on your corridors.
The higher the better. Although, you know, don't wait till it becomes oppressive. But the, you know, the whole intent is to improve the look of the community.
Which I think Madam Sheriff goes into some of the questions I put there at the bottom, enforcement, retroactivity, fencing requirements, what's in place now, sort of ties into what's enforced. Most of the things that are enforced right now in terms of those corridors, number one, you'll see some of those car lots that have non-functioning cars. That's not technically allowed in the C2 zoning. If you're gonna have a car lot where they're junk cars and for parts, that has to be in the, I believe, they have two zoning, and they're not really allowed, so somebody even mentioned the name of one of the facilities that's on, or businesses that's on 19. And if those cars aren't operable, they're not supposed to be there, because they're not supposed to be junk cars. They are supposed to be a car lot of cars that move. Now, there's been some movement and some enforcement action. Uh, you know, it's a matter of how hard you wanna push people and, you know, whether they want to enter court, or how many. And then, of course, there's the whole COVID thing, where really, there's no penalty now. We can write you 100 tickets and nothing's gonna happen. So what's the use of us spending that kind of staff time, cause there are no courts to hold? And then if you said, okay, well, you're not going to court, if there was, we'll put you in jail, but the jail's not accepting anybody. So right now, code enforcement's in a very precarious situation, because there's really no penalties. Whether it's the court system or ultimately jail system, they're nonexistent. So we can't really punish you for not doing the right thing in terms of that type of system. So that's part of the problem, but the things we do look at are certainly maintenance of the yard, junk things. You're aware there's some businesses that are so far gone, have been gone that way for decades, that any progress is recognized and we appreciate, it's still not perfect. Uh, we're about to talk about the moratorium in, in my section, but I think that, and, and my constant question with that, that's been done first by the city and the county for the six months, is what's the purpose? And I think the purpose may be in some cases, to improve the regulations, to make them stricter, so that we can go after that sort of business, or raise their standards. For instance, and this is just a, for instance, there's, I don't wanna get anybody excited, there's been no discussion, to my knowledge of anything, but maybe a used car lot, maybe it's gotta be paved, okay? That could be a standard, it's not been discussed, it's like just giving examples. We, because we have, you know, used car lots in 19 that aren't paved, they're dirt, or grass, or broken up, or whatever. And some of those used car lots have things that are parted out, well, that's not what it's supposed to be. You're supposed to be a used car lot, everything's supposed to be moved, so we have gone after them for that part. Tall grass and weeds, um, that sort of thing. Now, I've been told that the city did adopt the International Property Maintenance Code. If that's something you wanna discuss in the future, it's very, relatively speaking, drastic. If you have enough peeling paint, we can write you a ticket. It looks at a lot of minor things that people would say, well, that's being a little picky, but that's what that maintenance code, I believe, I've been told, that the city adopted it. It's just an extreme.
What about litter, is there anything language we could add that requires?
Well, that would be the accumulation of junk and trash, and, you know, Jeremy has written tickets for that, but is it just because there's McDonald's wrapper here and that, that, no, it's usually some sort of accumulation that people just sort of create a pile on their property, or illegal dumping, which tends not to be on these strips, it tends to be other places, but Jeremy has, especially a complaint driven, gone after illegal dumping, but again, that's sort of gathered. If it's just from everybody tossing out their water bottles and their burger wrappers. You know, really, your better thing is to, I'm not sure if we've ever had a keep up some clean sort of thing, but revitalize maybe program like that. You know, everybody gets a mile of these corridors and they're responsible for cleaning up and they get their name on a sign. You know, this section done by Boy Scout troop 222, and this one done by Kwanis or whatever.
Right.
That sort of thing, promote recycling.
Litter ticket. A litter ticket, ticket for littering would go a long way.
Who's gonna ride it?
Huh?
Who's, who's gonna ride it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if.
That was kinda where I was.
Sheriff's, if you're riding down the road and they see somebody throw something out, then.
Should've kept I can in prison camp. Yeah.
But I think we could easily brainstorm, give you a better list than I've got. And then if you wanted a further list, we could even bring Jeremy in here, if you wanted to talk to Jeremy about what he does. And along those lines, in terms of retroactivity, generally speaking, most ordinance are not gonna be, say that you gotta fix this right now. Depends on what it is. I mean, you have an ordinance that, we didn't have a sign ordinance and did not require signs to be maintained. I would submit that once we adopted ordinances, if your sign's gotta be maintained, yes, we could be retroactive, say, I know that thing has been falling apart for five years, now fix it, because now we have an ordinance that says, fix it now. I think in a particular case like that, yes, you could be retroactive to, no, we're only recognizing signs that started to deteriorate now. So some of those things, but if it's an improvement like, oh, yes, we need three trees and five bushes that are this high, and that sort of thing. Generally speaking, no, that's gonna be with new construction, or I have been involved in when it comes to landscape.
Change ownership.
Um, no, what it was, was major construction. And in this case, it was, if, if you had the value of, say, $50,000 or more, you had to put $5,000 towards landscape improvements, as they now are in our new code. You didn't have to put in every tree and every bush, but whatever, say, 10%, you're already improving your structure $50,000. So we're gonna say, you gotta add, say, 5,000, some percentage, and now you've gotta do this much. This is what the landscaping would have been required if you were brand new, we're not gonna require you to do it all. But because you're already doing all these major improvements, spending money, we're gonna require you to do this much. And we were successful about getting, Walmart got, you know, they did blank when we did that with them. They were doing a major renovation and they were required to put some of that landscaping in that was in the new landscape ordinance. So in terms of those sort of things, that's some of the retroactive that you can do in a little way. It would, would depend on what the particular item is, whether you'd, you know, well, eventually get around to it, or no, we're gonna require it right now. I, you know, like, suppose we require parking lots now to be paved if they're for used cars? Be interesting to see what the board of commissioners would say in terms of retroactivity, you know? Or maybe you've got two years, in the next two years, your lot's gotta be paved. That's potentially, that could happen. Not right now, but eventually. Um, fencing? Um, the trouble with on a corridor is you wanna be careful about your fencing, you want it aesthetically pleasing, you want it to be relatively maintenance free, cause as we know, you can all think of some really bad fences in Upson County, and it's like, we'd rather have nothing there than that falling down fence. We don't have any regulation of fences right now, that's a normal question, we get a lot of fencing questions normally, where can I put it? Of course, this is a rural county, so there's a whole lot of agriculture we do not wanna be permitting fencing for. So then we would probably look at, okay, well, if it's in the C2 and 1M2, now we're gonna have some fencing regulations. Or if it's in your gateway corridor, you know, where do you wanna have fencing, and what, what sort of fencing? And what are the aesthetics of that? Cause we all know, you can have really bad looking fencing, or you can have some really pretty fencing walls. I can think of a town that I know of that, in a major corridor, and it was all residential for a long stretch, and they, as the community themselves, the taxpayers paid for very attractive brick walls. Now, they weren't, you know, all the way, they sort of were stacked, and they had, at an angle where they got near the roads. So it wasn't attractive at first, when you thought, you know, wall in your city is gonna be like a wall, and it wasn't that way. It was very attractive, very nice, the community accepted it eventually, I mean, you're using their yards, in some cases are a right way to put that up. their yards, in some cases are applying the right of way to put that up, I think. But it walled in their major road in the community and looked great. But that was more to protect the residential uses from all that traffic that was coming and going.
Right, sound and all that.
Well, and then you have, you got sound barriers, but we don't have interstates, so we don't have to worry about that.
But I think that's some of the stuff in, like, Peachtree City, that they, like, what you're talking about with the, with the brick, um, walls along the, like, 34, 50, 54, is as much for sound for those people that's right there on the other side of that.
Or visual, or visual.
Or visual, right, sound and visual.
The resident doesn't have to see all the traffic along the roadway.
Correct.
And of course, now you got, was it Windwood? Is that subdivision North End, where they did it by just having a whole lot of woods? The houses are way back there. And so, you can do it that way too, just have a buffer, sort of, we were talking about the landscape buffer here, where, you know, you protect it that way by the trees and the brush, and whatever else you're allowed to grow there.
Well, I'd like to see some language where fences have to be maintained.
That would be, that's, considering we right now have zero regulation for fences.
But, you know, because people do let their fences go and dilapidate, you know, on abandoned properties, and a whole lot you can do about it if you don't have an ordinance.
Now, I can think of one on 36, Armsville Highway, has been looking worse and warped in the short time that I've been here.
Right.
And it's like, that's to protect the residential area, unless they weren't too interested in the protection, since they've allowed that fence to get...
Yeah, the fence is falling down now, so, yeah.
And the other thing I'll suggest is, and this was in one that I used to have to enforce, is finish side out. Now, that may not mean much most of the time, but you can think of some fences where half is the decorative side, the other is the support structure. Well, the ordinance that I enforced required that enforced structure to face you, the person who put up the fence, and the pretty side was, you know, out. Now, there are other ones that it's the same on both sides, because the support's sort of between them, that would take care of that, if somebody doesn't want to look at the support side of the fence, so. If you want to put the nose of the camel in that tent, we could probably include that too, is finish side out. And maybe, um, let's see, we don't, now, I, we started to discuss this, we don't want to include AR. If it's zoned AR in your corridor, are we going to leave them alone for fencing? Is that a question? Yep.
No, it's part of the gateway.
I mean, I think they still have to maintain their fencing, that doesn't mean that they've got to...
Get a permit.
Right.
Okay. So we're not going to touch a permit.
They have to maintain their fencing, they have to maintain the, the, the area around it.
Keep your cows out of the road.
Well, they can't let trees grow up through their...
Through the pinnets.
Through the fence, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There needs to be some kind of language, I mean, the whole intent is gateway to the community, trying to give an impression that the community is well-maintained, we care about our own community, and so we want them to care as well.
All right, and this occurred to me, I'm not real familiar with how this is handled in other places, but when we go through or down our gateways, is that a certain distance from the right-of-way of that road, or is it the first lot in and done? So this will apply to, you know, the first 500 feet off the right-of-way, all the way down, or is this addressed just the first lot that touches? And if there's a lot, if it's only 100 feet deep, we don't worry about that lot that's behind that one, it's...
I think it touches, what touches the right-of-way.
Yeah, okay.
First lot.
First one.
If it touches the right-of-way of that road, that highway.
The gateway.
Yep.
Good.
Anything else? Nope.
All right, Madam Chair, we'll do another draft, and we'll bring that to you next, and then some of the research or the background information. Did y'all want to ask Jeremy to come? Do you want to talk to him about code enforcement?
Sure.
There's one.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah. I think it's a good one.
Um, the tiny house ordinance, I know that we were, um, looking for possibly some specs or some other guidance to go by, but I know there's not a lot, if anything, out there.
Well, I guess that's what I need to understand, where are we? Do you just want to see now a draft of what it would look like? Is that where we are?
Yeah, we've got a draft that we kind of went through.
Do you need more information, or something you want to add to that?
Yeah. I don't know, we got, you know, we got the new business, we're kind of...
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't really want to get into that tonight, my, my, where I'm going with that is, if there is any, um, community that, since this was put in place, has done something for tiny house ordinance.
A little more research.
Yeah.
All right.
Then we can, um, come back to that, if we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
There we go.
Um, all right, new business. The application for special exception, SPX 2021-01, William T. Reeves, 1193 Allen Road, 250 square feet of a 29.419 acre tract, parcel 079089, or family cemetery. We'll open the public hearing, call Ms. Reeves.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes, sir.
This is Doug Courier, you're now live at the public hearing. If you'd like to make any statements during the public hearing about your request to have the cemetery on your land, and then the planning commissioners may have some questions. The floor is yours, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just wondering, this big day that I was going to be cremated, but I haven't seen my mother, I would lose my mind if I was cremated, so, I'm just a place I had my little farm, like, I enjoy my place that I could be buried there. I've owned the property for 32 years.
Okay, are, are you, um, are you looking, so it's only for you to be buried there, one, one person, is that correct?
Uh, then Gary Self, the answer I made when I looked at it, he said it was the same that we did in 110, so we just did a 5, which is 125 by 10, which would be 5. It's not, we're just not going to be 90, it's just going to be, just, I'm, I'm, I'm a ER patient, and I'm just trying to get my business over.
Okay, okay. Um, any, any questions for Ms. Reeves?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, I don't think we have any other questions for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Any discussion on that?
I don't have any.
We have the staff report.
Yeah, I mean, before we do that?
No, I'm good.
Do you want to give us the staff report?
Okay, public hearing?
Oh, close the public hearing.
All right, I think this is, we've done a number of these cases over the years, so they're, they're pretty open and shut and understandable. We just heard from Mr. Reeves, who owns this property on Allen Road. Basically, it's only 250 square feet of the 29, and not quite a half acres. Traditionally, we do not encourage, when they come in and talk to our office, we always suggest that they do more than one plot, even if they're not sure who somebody else might be, but there's just no reason for them to come back to you, you know, all right, now there's somebody else, grandma or grandpa or somebody, now we've got to come back to this board for just another 25 or 30 square feet or whatever the next one. Why don't we get you a certain number of spaces, and then you're taken care of for a certain amount of time? Hopefully, it won't be too long. We lost our connection, I wonder what happened there? It's been off a while? Hmm. Um, all right, well, I can see my screen. Let's see. All right, and, um, in the AR zoning, cemeteries are permitted by special exception, and that's why we're here. This is not an uncommon case that we have. On Allen Road, this location is between Floret and US 80, Tax Map 8990, this is actually a bit of a flag lot, as you'll see in your packet. It is not in any flood hazard area. The area is zoned AR predominantly, a lot of woods, scattered single-family, this is a low-density area. He's got certainly a lot of property for a very small family cemetery. There are review standards that we have, that the Board of Commissioners, as well as the Planning Commission, must review, special exception requests against. The staff has done that in these particular cases. In terms of contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, well, cemeteries are specifically listed as being eligible for special exceptions. The only issue is, are there any outstanding issues? So it's certainly not contrary to the purpose, it's just a matter of whether the impacts of this particular location, or what's being intended, are approvable and make sense and wouldn't be a nuisance. And that takes us into the nuisance, or the detrimental of the adjacent property requirements. You can see by the size of this, by the size of the lot, the low density of the neighborhood, that this could go in, and you probably wouldn't even know it, you know, for years and years and years. So certainly, it shouldn't be a nuisance, or any detriment to the next-door neighbors, or to the neighborhood. Again, because of the size of this area, there's a huge buffer. It's heavily wooded, so there's not going to be any problem in terms of existing uses and the lot's size. And we're unaware of any other requirements other than those which require Funeral Director attention because of the disposal of the human remains, and that's really, you know, outside of what we're looking at, we're just looking at the land use type issue. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this special exception for at least two reasons, generally consistent with the ordinance requirements and the criteria, and really, there's lack of any significant evidence that this would have a negative impact on the neighborhood or the immediate neighbors. There are five recommended conditions, these are fairly traditional, we developed these over the other cases. The only one that I've added is number five, is, and this is because this has come up, where at least one of these family cemeteries was discontinued, and we certainly would like to have that recorded, that there's a recording that says there is a cemetery there, it would be nice to know if there's some sort of a deed recorded, or some document recorded, okay, that person's now been moved, and especially when there's only one person there, there's no longer a cemetery. So these are the standard conditions. There are very few, really no land use regulations at the state level for cemeteries, it's all left to the local government. We don't have any, other than the fact that all cemeteries are only permitted by special exception in the AR. I'm going to guess that if you wanted to do this in R1, R2, R4, they wouldn't even be allowed. I think AR is the only zoning district where cemeteries are permitted by special exception. Of course, 85% of the county is AR. Of course, Planning Commission has the right to approve approval conditions, or recommend denial to the Board of Commissioners. This is a portion, well, in your packets, there is a copy of the aerial, and you'll see that it's sort of a flag lot, and this is heavily wooded lot. And then if you look at the schematic that was drawn by Mr. Gary Self for Mr. Reeves, you'll see the approximate location and how small it, to scale, the location is, and then you've got setbacks of 75 feet, that's the smallest setback that there is. Every other setback is far larger than a 75-foot setback, and there's certainly nothing from a structural standpoint that we ever require to have a 75-foot setback. So that's quite a distance for this. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
What constitutes discontinuance?
Uh, if they're no longer buried there.
If no one's buried there, like, they exhume?
Right, we've had one case where there's only one burial, and now there's nobody, and the reason why he was exhumed and moved somewhere else is because they couldn't serve the property.
I see.
I don't think any of our family cemeteries have had more than one person, although one of them already had some, I think, Civil War-era people, so that one wouldn't go anywhere, they're adding on to it.
Right.
Any questions, comments? Jeff?
I'm making a motion to remove to approve this special exception.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, other business, the moratorium ordinance?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is just for discussion purposes. This did not come before this board, it was something that started with the city, and the county felt that it was necessary for it to follow suit, so that maybe everything that was now not allowed for six months in the city came with the county. So there's a six-month moratorium specifically for these type of uses, convenience stores, tattoo parlors, piercing studios, thrift stores, vape shops, tobacco shops, dollar stores, car wash facilities, pawn shops, used car lots, self-serve storage facilities, and package stores. So right now, nobody new can open any of these businesses, and there's a question right now about, can anybody new but an existing convenience store open up? So that, we actually have that question in my office right now. Somebody's asking to get an occupation tax certificate, reopen one of the convenience stores, it's a change in ownership, and there's just a discussion at the least staff level right now whether that's allowed, that basically, if the old owner's leaving, are we going to allow them to reopen with new ownership in existing convenience stores? Now, does the moratorium apply that you can't change hands? So I'm not quite sure what the, the answer to that is going to be. It may have to just go to the attorneys, I believe that question was actually discussed when they were adopting this ordinance, so I think his answer at the time was on a case-by-case basis, so. But we shall see, I believe that somewhere in May and June that the six months have run out. I would anticipate that some of these policies, when they come out with policy directions, that they would come through you. Now, are they going to ask you to develop the language, or is it going to be presented to you, what they want to do? I don't know. I, I've got questions, you know, that I asked, you know, what's our problem with dollar stores? What new standards do we want for dollar stores? I don't know what those would be, or what were the new standards for vape shops or tobacco shops, BI? I don't know. But we'll find out.
When did I, when was this enacted?
November, December, so we've got till like, May, June.
November 24th.
Late November. So we'll see, I don't know what all of it will amount to, but we'll probably get involved in it.
But what was the legislative intent of this?
I guess, well, that's basically my question, is what's the problem with some of these uses that we have? And I'm not quite sure.
Well, I'm curious, and this is why I'm curious, if these old... Um, if these ordinances do come to us, uh, what, what inference can we draw from this document that, you know, there was a moratorium on certain types of businesses? Should we discourage those, or, I mean?
Well, in either...
Just proper communication between us and the governing authority.
That's exactly my question. What, what is the legislative intent? What is it we're trying to achieve by having this moratorium? And what is gonna come out of it?
Curious.
Especially with these certain businesses. I think alcohol is pretty self-evident, that, I mean, you can, there are all sorts of things, you know, you can limit, which we don't currently do limit.
Tattoo parlors and vape shops and that kind of stuff.
Well, and tattoo parlors are heavily, heavily regulated by the Public Health Department, so...
Well, I understand, but as far as, uh, some would see them as potential wider material, that, uh, you know, they're just an attractive nuisance as a, some would see that. I see, and I do, some would, especially on your main corridors or whatever, people get an impression of your community when they see businesses such as that, so...
Could be positive or negative, depending on how many tattoos they have.
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on how many, you know.
Hey, I got five myself, and I'd like to check that shop out.
Yeah, exactly. So, some of these, I mean, I understand, but convenience stores, I mean, are, you know, if, say, Raceway wanted to come in and build another Raceway, we'd say, I can open up a convenience store. Another fifteen pumps, might be on the south side of town, I don't know. Some would say that is growth.
Maybe they need to be landscaped with a certain number of trees and bushes.
Yeah, and then have, yeah, and then have a half of memorial signs.
All that gateway work.
A big aerial sign, right.
Make the gas pump look like pine tree.
There you go.
There you go.
It's like the cell phone towers.
Yeah.
Got one of the lakes, got a, got a pine tree coming out the top of it.
So this was FYI?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Things that sort of, probably coming attractions, I would think.
Uh, other business, item two, elections, chair, vice-chair, this year. We, should we not do this before? This one do?
That's just the approved one.
Oh, that's just approved, okay.
The word approved, not as opposed to...
Okay. Got it.
I've been well pleased with the past, uh, president and vice-president.
Chair and vice-chair?
Yeah, chair and vice-chair. I would, I would like to...
We don't want no drunk presidents.
I would like to make a motion that, uh, that we maintain that tradition right there.
And I second that.
I know it's awkward for you, but you're the chair, so you gotta accept the nominations, or, or not accept the nomination yourself, but...
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations. For the record, that means that you are the chair and Mr. Bailey is the vice-chair.
I think he does fine job, so.
Fine, I just sit over here and do my business.
Yeah. And we can, we can, we... My name is Article of the...
Well, I have to look at your bylaws to see what's next.
I was gonna say, where does that fall into bylaws?
I'm sure there's something in there.
Try not to threaten anybody.
Yep.
Um, all right. Item six, Planning Commissioner issues and announcements. Anybody have anything?
No.
Secretaries' issues and announcements.
Uh, you already have the approved agenda, so now this one says approved and not proposed, and that's it, keep it on the refrigerator someplace close to your heart, where you won't forget about us, little people here at the Planning Commission, when that schedule comes up. Although, your attendance is wonderful, I wanna compliment you on, I've been doing this for a few years, and, you know, I, I can probably count on two fingers, if not one, that there are other boards I've had to call to get quorum, and on a regular basis, and I don't have to do this with board and never have. So that's wonderful, speaks well of community and the folks that get appointed to your Planning Commission, that you have quorum quite regularly, and it's never a giffy question, and I've gotta make phone calls to see if we can gather somebody else, so.
I would also add that, uh, that I, I feel that you're the better end of the stick that we've had to deal with.
On this side.
You've made, yes, you've made things quite pleasant, and, uh, I think you do a wonderful job.
Absolutely.
There we go.
Thanks.
Second that, for sure.
However, that doesn't mean there's any extra money at the end of the month.
Anybody opposed to adjournment?
No.
All right, then we are adjourned.
Set fire. Thank you. And with the...
And while those cemetery plots, I do have to say.
This, this...
I'm gonna go turn this on.
Are we still on?
Yes.
Until I go, it's still on, so. Hold that thought.
Yes, hold that thought, whatever it is.
I got it.